For the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everybody. Our treasurer just had a baby, so it is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Mr. Kleokos, and I'm sure I butchered that, and I apologize, as treasurer pro temp for the purpose of recording the minutes of the December 2022 regular meeting.
Hello.
Move on, Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamara. Roll call, please.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Tamara?
Yes.
Ms. Grigsby?
Yes.
Ms. Saxum?
Yes.
Ms. Rockwell?
Yes. Thank you. Roll call for attendance, please.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Here. Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Saxum?
Here.
Ms. Tamara?
Here.
Mr. Rockwell?
Here.
Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add and or delete?
We did a final statement.
All right, we'll be right into the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, this is an exciting way to go into winter break, but there are lots of exciting things happening around the district, including a concert downstairs, so I would like to bring up Mrs. Amanda Zapatakney, who is going to introduce our Liberty Students of the Month.
Thank you. What if our Student of the Month is joining us after you and our other Student of the Month, Bennett? Is there a student of the month here with me? Our first grade student of the month is Claire Massey, and Claire is in Ms. Bogus's class. She and her family are actually going to see the Nutcracker this evening, and so they are joining us by Zoom. Claire was nominated by Ms. Bogus because she is such a wonderful student to have in class. She shows empathy, respect, and compassion to her classmates. Empathy was actually our character strong theme for December, and Claire is a perfect example of what it means to be empathetic. She's always willing to help a friend in need. Claire works hard at everything she does. We are very lucky to have her at Liberty this year. Keep up the great work, Claire. You are Ranger Strong, and we are so proud of you. And our second grade student of the month is Bennett. Bennett is in Ms. Noga's class, and Ms. Noga nominated Ben because he is an outstanding student and citizen at Liberty. Ben is responsible, helpful, humorous, and he takes learning very seriously. Bennett is a great role model to his peers, and he is always attentive and inquisitive throughout our lessons. Way to go, Bennett. We are very proud of you. Thank you for being here. At this time, I would like to welcome up Melissa Durkin. She will be presenting Student of the Month for ECLC on behalf of Mrs. Vance, who is at our concert downstairs.
Well, this is fun. I have the honor. I have the honor of presenting two Learners of the Month from the Early Childhood Learning Center, and I'm very excited. First, we're gonna present Zola. Zola is in preschool, right, Zola? Yeah, that's so exciting. And Zola was nominated by Ms. Jane, and this is what Ms. Jane had to say. Zola happily arrives to school every day. She's excited to play with her peers and joins with the class during circle time songs and games. Zola has shown growth in all areas this year. Keep up the excellent work, Zola. Good job. I'd like to present Carter, and Carter was nominated by Mrs. Bublenic, and this is what she had to say about Carter. Carter is an excellent role model in the classroom. He is always positive and takes on any new challenges with a great attitude. I enjoy.
I have a baby.
I enjoy watching Carter explain our lesson concepts to his peers. He has a big heart and is a friend to everyone. Carter is Ranger Strong. This one here is Zola. All right, let's get you back. Mr. Heffron, I'm gonna do my RHCA, and then I will get you up here. Can you find your way back? Okay, and now I'm going to announce the RHCA Learners of the Month. So can I please have Rosalyn come up here, and can I also have Erin come up here? And I believe that Vincent is joining us on Zoom tonight. Vincent was our November learner of the month, but he was not able to join us in November. Is that on the slides? That's okay. I will start with Vincent since it's with November. Vincent has been nominated by Coach Minnet, and Coach Minnet said, Vincent has done a great job demonstrating the Ranger Strong attribute of teamwork. When placed with a partner or group, he is always strong, respectful, and a kind team member. He is on task and ensures that his group members are too. He will always help a friend who is stuck without being asked. I am so proud of all of Vincent's hard work in third grade and his ability to be Ranger Strong every day. Keep up the good work. Great job, Vincent. Now, I would like to share our December Learners of the Month. So Rosalyn is in Coach Powell's class in second grade, and this is what Coach Powell had to say about Rosalyn. Rosalyn takes ownership of her classwork and her learning. She goes above and beyond and puts great effort into her work. She takes ownership of her behavior as well. She is always on task and focused on learning. Rosalyn is a great classmate to the whole class. Great job, Rosalyn. We're very proud of you. Erin, I am very excited. Stay right there, Rosalyn, okay? I am very excited to announce Erin. Erin is one of our eighth graders, and he was actually nominated by two of our coaches this year. First, he was nominated by Coach Waikie, and Coach Waikie said, Erin demonstrates the Ranger Strong attribute of teamwork. This year, Erin has shown kindness and empathy to his friends and classmates. He demonstrates maturity in making choices that he can be proud of and is always helpful in class. And Coach Zavatchin nominated Erin and said, Erin works hard to master new technologies and use our fabrication equipment. He is always willing to help his colleagues when they hit a snag in their project. It is so nice to see Erin use his skills to support others. Keep up the hard work, Erin. I am so proud of you. Great. And now I would like to turn it over to Mr. Heffron, who will be announcing NRC Learners of the Month.
I could have Tom come up, Sienna, Colton, and Sean.
All right, my name is Mitch Chaffrin, and I am the Associate Principal at the Academic Center, and it is my pleasure to introduce some of our Students of the Month, all the way from grades three all the way up to eight. So I'm gonna introduce a couple of them, and we're gonna start with the youngest grade, third grade. And this is Colin Payntner, and he was nominated by the third grade Teal Studio, and here's what they have to say. We're nominating Colin because of his excellent teamwork. He is selfless, caring, hardworking, are just a few of the characteristics that describe what a great student Powell is. He consistently puts his best effort into everything that he does. He is a friend to all teachers and to the students. We are so proud to have him as Student of the Month. Congratulations, Colin. Our next Student of the Month, I'm gonna hold off because I don't think she's here right now, and we will do that next month. Um, so our next Student of the Month is a seventh grader, and his name is Colton. Why don't you go ahead and raise your. All right, so Colton Crumley was nominated by the seventh grade Yellow Studio, and here's what they had to say about. Colton is an exceptional student in the seventh grade Yellow Studio. He is involved in many different school activities, including football, basketball, mock trial, and he's one of our finalists for one of my personal favorite activities, which was the amazing shake. So congratulations on that. That's a real testament of how awesome you are. Colton is a very Ranger Strong student by keeping up with his schoolwork, lending a helpful hand to the teachers and students even without being asked. The seventh grade Yellow Studio is extremely lucky to have you. Great job. And our last Student of the Month was nominated by the Secretaries of the Academic Center, so congratulations. That's an honor. And his name is Sean Millsick, and here's what the Secretary's had to say about it. For, we nominated Sean for Student of the Month because he's always coming in the office with a smile, which we do appreciate. Thank you. He is also helpful, no matter what he is asked to do. He enjoys the school and is happy to be there. He is somewhat shy, but really opens up and really, when he gets to know you. He also performs in plays at the Old Town Hall and couldn't wait to tell us about it. He is innovative and always willing to help us out with any task in the office. He deserves to be recognized as one of our Students of the Month. Congratulations, Sean. Thank you for what thing that you do. And I believe high school's next, right?
Welcome, Mr. Mueller.
Oh, sorry, yes, Mr. Mueller. I'm a little rusty at this.
Good evening, buddy.
Good evening.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody out here. I truly hope that everyone has a great holiday break and that you can find time for peace, love, and family in your life. It's a time for reflection. I know that our students and staff have earned the break that they're about to take tomorrow. We had our music, holiday music concert, and I just want to let everybody in the community know that we brought 1,400 kids together into high school gymnasium and helped them understand what appropriate behavior is for music concerts. I know that our musicians, artists, and directors were thrilled to have the opportunity to display their incredible talent and the hard work that they put in year after year to be part of a team, to orchestra, if you will, their musical talents. So I was very proud of them, and I just want to make sure that we're on the record of saying how proud we are of them. You saw me step over to one of our Students of the Month to ask if she had her college bio that's submitted to guidance because it's outstanding, and what I got here doesn't do her justice. I'm gonna, but I'll read it anyway. I'm gonna call both of our students. We have three, actually. One couldn't make it, and I'll read about her in a second, but I'd ask our two senior spotlight of the month, Lorena Clemens and Brendan Gipper, to step forward. These are two of our three Students of the Month. Alyssa Jacovetti was also nominated by staff and could not be here tonight because of a commitment. I asked both of them to step up because I walk with them every day. They represent you, your families, this school district, and our community, and our world in a manner that would make us all proud. I know, I say the same thing every month. But these kids, these two are truly special kids. They are quiet leaders. They don't seek attention. They have the ultimate respect of their teachers, our staff, and their peers at North Ridgeville High School. When they talk, their peers listen. I thank you both for that. You have been a great joy to me. I'm gonna start with Lorena, and if you would read her college bio, it would do her better justice than I can do here. She was nominated by many staff and our leadership team as Student of the Month. She's a stellar example of being Ranger Strong. She's on NRHS cross-country and track team. That's where I first met her. We did yoga together. Well, I should say, she did yoga, and I talked. She challenges me with her eyes every week. Okay, Mueller, what are you doing? And are you doing things right? And I just give her a nod, give her a fist bump, go about my business, and rest assured that someone is keeping tabs on me. It's a good thing. And I know where that starts, Mom. I know where that starts. Her mom is, works in our concession stand and volunteers for our programs, and that's what it takes to help mold and shape the future of one of our young Rangers. She does many other acts of kindness that brighten people's day, mine in particular. Her favorite class is accounting. Really? Sorry, I'm. And she does many other acts of kindness that brighten people. Her favorite class, accounting, and her dream college is Clemson University. After college, Lorena hopes to pursue a career as a project manager. Her spirit animal is a tiger. She is a truly excellent example of being Ranger Strong, and she is an absolute jewel of an asset to North Ridgeville High School and the North Ridgeville City Schools. What music? And she's a member of Acappella Choir. If you go on Twitter, NRHS. They were wonderful today. Our next senior is Brendan Gipper. It took me a few weeks to get to know Brendan's name, but I was like, who is that kid? Because he led everything. He organizes all of our school spirit groups, programs, and assemblies. He put together our tailgate parties at football games this year. He was the emcee, one of the emcees at our homecoming pep rally, did a fabulous job. You should see his grades. I'm just gonna tell you, they're stellar. He is, he is a member of the high school baseball team. I was gonna read his college bio. Played baseball for four years at the high school. Could be a four-year Letterman Award winner. He was the captain of the baseball team his junior year and hopes to be as well his senior year. Neither of these students take anything for granted. They know that things are earned, not given. He's been a part of Champions for Life for the past two years, a member of varsity R, also been awarded with the Academic Excellence Award every year of high school, and also the Scholar-Athlete Award. His senior year, he stepped up, as I said, into some leadership roles involved with the school, and that includes helping lead the student section, planning pep rallies, planning homecoming, and he's part of our Lead Ranger Leadership Program to help develop the next phase of leadership at North Ridgeville High School after he graduates. It's my pleasure to present both Lorena Clemens and Brendan Gipper to our community and to our school district as high school Students of the Month. Thank you. Our last student nominated is Alyssa Jacovetti, and I was hoping that Michael Cassini was here because Michael has a special thing to say about Alyssa. She's a suburb, also a superb example of being Ranger Strong. She's on our NRHS golf and bowling teams. She loves to bowl, not only for the sport, but also as a hobby. She's a proud member of the Key Club and is a valued volunteer. Her favorite class is English, and her dream college is Huntington University. After college, Alyssa hopes to pursue a career as a teacher. Spirit animal is a dog, and she is a wonderful asset to us. We wish her good luck in the future. And I don't know if anybody knows the specific kindness and letter that she presented to the district that resulted in her nomination. Have they known? I think it was during our Bond and Levy campaign, and it was so impressive that she was nominated, deservedly so, as Student of the Month. So congratulations to Alyssa. Thank you all.
So once again.
Her family's here as well.
We congratulate all of our Students of the Month, and you know, you all have done some pretty amazing things. Lorena and Brendan specifically have had the opportunity to do some work with at the high school and outside organizations, and I can tell you every word Mr. Mueller said about them is absolutely true. And again, outstanding role models for all of you young Rangers in the room looking to make your mark when you enter our high school. So congratulations to all of you and certainly wish you a wonderful holiday break. Mrs. Hostetler is standing up there once again, following Mr. Mueller to our staff members of the month, and I'll turn it over to her.
All right. This is one of my most exciting moments of the month, and it's always so nice to see all the parents and students in the audience as well, because I think it's so important to recognize what they're doing and the hard work they're doing, and then get an opportunity on behalf of the Board of Education, announce two of our fantastic staff members of the month. So Grace is here with us today, so I would like to first call her up. So every month we nominate parents, colleagues, students are able to nominate staff members of the month, and our first award winner tonight is Grace Tickenmeyer. Grace was hired this past summer and is in her very first year as a school counselor for us. Prior to her hire, she worked as a school counselor at St. Joseph Academy. She was a graduate student intern at Gilmore Academy and served as the executive office coordinator for the Office for the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. She has also worked in the Amercor in Washington, D.C. So she did have vast experience coming to us and has been an excellent addition to our staff. She had three nominations this month, so it's always an honor to get one. She had two colleagues and a parent nominate her. One of those colleagues had this to say. Grace just joined our school this year, but it feels like she's been with us forever. She jumped in with enthusiasm from day one and has kept her positivity throughout this stressful first semester. Our students love her and feel comfortable talking to her. They often ask to visit her office when they are having a bad day. Grace is quick to respond to emails and provides so much support for our students. When she works with students, she is calm and patient, which helps to diffuse tricky situations and creates a welcoming environment. She always has a smile on her face and treats everyone with kindness. We are so happy to have her on our NRAC team. Another colleague shared this. I am nominating Miss T because she is an amazing counselor and colleague. We have students visiting her all throughout the day, and Miss T welcomes them with a smiling face and a positive attitude. She always makes time for students and helps guide them through problems, whatever the situation may be. You can tell that students feel comfortable with her through her interactions, and I feel that exemplifies what a school counselor should be. As a colleague, she is always willing to help or answer any questions that I may have. Miss T is kind, courteous, and professional throughout each and every day. Finally, a parent had this to say about Grace. Miss T has gone above and beyond to work with my son since the beginning of the school year. She is new to the district and hit the ground running from the moment we met her as new student orientation the day before school began. She has been a safe place for him to go when he needs a break or just someone to talk to. She has built a relationship with him in just three short months and makes him comfortable coming to her when needed. I don't think my son would have been, would have been successfully gotten through these last months without the compassion and the concern of Miss T. Congratulations, Grace. Thank you for your passion, for your work, and your dedication to our students. It's so nice to have a new staff member get recognized so early in her career, so that speaks, you know, volumes to her. The second employee this evening is unable to join us here in person, but was thrilled with his recognition as well, and it's Mr. Kevin Ayers. Kevin was hired in 2019 and has been assigned to the emotional support room at Liberty Elementary. Prior to his hire, he worked at Little Learners and for the Berea Children's Home in Berea. Kevin's colleagues had this to share. Kevin is such a hard worker. He is ready to move to any room or situation to help students succeed. He always goes above and beyond. He is a great staff member, and I am proud to work with him. Kevin is an important part of the machine that runs Liberty. Not a day goes by where he won't go out of his way to make the staff and students alike feel not only like they are wanted at Liberty, but they belong there. The kids adore Mr. A, and honestly, so does the staff. Though he works specifically with students at ESR, Mr. A doesn't make that distinction. All of Liberty's kids are his kids, and he loves them all and treats them with the respect and celebrates their individuality. He lets the kids know that it is okay to have a bad day as long as they do their best to bounce back. He also artistically balances the discipline and care needed by not only the students in ESR that he serves, but everyone. Finally, let's face it, one of the best things about Mr. A is that he knows how to have fun. He brings out the child in everyone, and for kids that are shy and not, and not yet out of their shells, he is a valuable beyond measurable, beyond measure. Kids are discovering who they are at Liberty, and Kevin Ayers does such an amazing job to help them realize the person, and they are very lucky to have him. So I would just like to take this opportunity to thank everybody that nominated our staff members this month and congratulate Ms. Tickenmeyer and Mr. Ayers once again. So thank you.
Congratulations to all our students and staff. It's always so fun to sit up here and recognize our students and see them come up here and your other accomplishments from the preschool all the way through our high school. You're all truly inspiring youngsters and young adults, and it's an honor to sit up here and recognize you. And our staff, obviously, we couldn't do it without you. I mean, you're all amazing. You do wonderful jobs, and the community's blessed to have such dedicated individuals that come to work every single day and inspire the young people in our district. So congratulations. Happy holidays to all of you. We will take a brief intermission. All right. We got a building report coming out of Ranger High Tech Academy. That was my bad. We're gonna take a brief intermission after this report and get pictures of everybody, so. All right. Pictures now, I apologize.
Do you want to do the intermission first so that they can? Yeah, okay. We're gonna take a quick picture of all of our Students of the Month, if they could, and our staff members as well.
Well, I'm really excited to be here today to talk about Ranger High Tech Academy and the exciting things that are happening over at RHCA this year. And the first thing that I'd kind of like to let you know, which I'm sure you already know, is that we officially have earned our five-year redesignation, and we added the arts so that we have a STEM designation instead of just having the STEM designation. So we're very proud of that.
Congratulations.
And then we, I wanted to kind of explain a little bit about how we restructured the high school pathway. One of the challenges that we saw were that being off campus all of the time, the learners didn't have that opportunity to participate in a lot of the electives. We had a very small staff, and then a lot of their classes had to be taken, college credit plus or online, which didn't open up as many opportunities as we would like, and we also. And we also wanted to ensure that all students had access to the high-quality STEM education that was occurring. So this year, we took that high school program and moved it back into the high school instead of that standalone school, which allowed us to create a pathway at the high school for anyone who wanted to be in that STEM programming. And part of what we did there was it allowed for our college credit plus teachers, the teachers who are on staff with North Ridgeville who teach college credit plus, to then open up those classes as well to anyone at the high school. So it wasn't just limited to that group of students. And then we've been working this year to develop the internships and the different pathways that will occur not only just with STEM, but the other pathways that we could provide at the high school level for students. That's something that we've been collaborating on with the high school and with the curriculum department and also with Lee Armbruster to make sure that going forward, we're able to have a lot of opportunities for everyone. And then what that looks like at the high school is there's four classes that are kind of blocked. And those are the STEM classes that are taught through a PBL manner. And outside of that block, they take electives. So it follows the regular schedule, the regular bell schedule. But on Fridays during that block, instead of having four separate classes, they do the integrated PBL work, they go on community immersions, they have guest speakers, they work on competitions. Right now, they're starting off the Believe in Ohio. So they do a lot of different things during that time and it allows for that flexibility and their ability to participate in those STEM activities that we've always been able to do. So we're very excited about that. We have 13 seniors. They started at RHTA, our first group, and they are graduating this year. So proud of them, so proud of everything that they've accomplished and I can't wait until commencement. I know I'm gonna cry, which I don't ever cry, so it. And then when we had our STEAM designation, we had some feedback from ODE and from the Ohio STEM Learning Network. And one of the things that they would like to see us do is focus on that art integration and not just the art integration, but how we put structures in place that allows that collaboration and for it truly to be an integrated PBL. So we've been putting things in place and increasing that this year and allowing that collaboration and that planning. Another thing that they would like to see us do is the staff and the teachers, when they're doing the partnerships and when they're engaging in the different partnerships and trying to find partners that match their content and their PBLs that they're doing, it can take a lot of time and it is definitely something that is not normally expected of teachers. So one thing that ODE and OSLN said was they'd like to see us put some things in place so that there's somewhere they can go for assistance and help with that in real time. So I've been working with Lee and we have been putting different structures in place in order to enhance that community and then also to allow for them to connect with different people or for us to facilitate those connections and kind of reduce some of the time that it takes for them to do that individually.
Excuse me, mister, can I apologize for you referred to PBL multiple times? What exactly is that?
PBL is project-based learning and that is the main instructional format that we use in a STEM-based school. And then our last goal is to increase our fabrication. And it's not that we, during COVID, the hands-on fabrication did reduce. Now that we're back in person, we're very excited about that. But our space and our STEAM works, which is our fabrication lab, is not conducive to having a whole class in there. And it takes time for individuals to work with that equipment. So you don't want a lot of downtime with kids that are standing around waiting for their turn. So what we've done, and I'll show you in a minute how we've done it, is increase the availability of fabrication equipment and make some of that mobile so that we can go into the classrooms with that or even some of it. Like we just brought our 3D printer cart over to the high school so that they can use that throughout the district to increase that ability to have access to that. Thank you. And we have received over $36,000 worth of grants this year to help facilitate these three goals. We have $10,000 from Perk and Henneffin, which was earmarked just for those community immersions. They contacted us and said, we would like to give you this grant for community immersions. So that really helps out. The $18,000 was earmarked for that fabrication. They wanted to help increase that access to fabrication in the district. And then the other amount from Batel there, that amount, I think it's $7,500, was for that arts integration and working on making sure that we can make those high-quality connections. So we were very excited about the funding that we've received to support these goals. And these are just some pictures of some of the experiences. If you don't follow us on Twitter, you should because everything, we try to post up there about all the great experiences that they have connecting learning to in authentic ways. Sorry. And then for our community immersion, oh, there you go. For our community immersions, we have had over 62 authentic connections and community immersions this year. Some of those are field trip type experiences. Some of those are Zoom, some of those are guest experts, but really making it authentic so they say they're able to see how the skills that they're using and learning are applied in the real world. Thank you. We've been working, like I said, with Lee in order to have our staff go out into different businesses as well and to connect with those businesses so that they can see those connections. Being an educator, you don't always know where those connections are in different local businesses. So we've really been trying to help them see where they can apply the content into careers and career fields. And then we've also been working on the STEAM Advisory Board and how we can reimagine that and restructure that so that it's a core group of people who are making some of those critical decisions on where we want the STEM and STEAM education in North Ridgeville to go. That's part of the STEAM designation that you have to have not only people from the district on that vision board, but also have people from the arts community and from local STEM businesses as well. These are our back some figures. I like to kind of keep track of where we've been and where we're going. And so you can see this year in 2223, we do have less grades because we restructured that so that the high school is separate. So we have grades two through eight and we have 24 official business partners, lots more businesses that we work with just occasionally. And then we have had six college credits earned this year by our eighth graders. Obviously, that does include any of the high school credits, the high school kids and their college credit that they've had. And this is just getting back to where we were before COVID. I'm very excited about the hands-on and authentic experiences and everything that we've been able to return to. So thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Final report tonight. On behalf of the community survey that was sent out just around the end of November and closed December 12th. And this was to gather some feedback regarding our bond issue that we set forth to pass this November. So I'll give a call a second to bring that up. And you do have this in front of you again for ease on your eyes, there are some smaller numbers. But before we get started, I do want to thank in the audience Mayor Corcoran and Tara Peet in the back, who along with the people in front of you and many of you, who really were the ones driving One Vision, One North Ridgeville and still remain committed to bettering North Ridgeville as both school district and city moving forward. And regardless of next steps, it was important to hear back from the community on their feelings, thoughts, and opinions as we approached November and how we continue as we do move forward. So we had an excellent turnout. I know Tara was not happy with our initial turnout, which was around 1,500. She reposted it and we got about 500 more replies within 24 hours. So we are thankful to not only the group here, but also to the group from TDA. So our architects, Ryan Caswell in particular, who really helped us structure a survey that could give us the results that we would need in order to move forward. And so much of this was, you know, put together in conjunction with TDA. We're appreciative for all of their hard work. So we had almost 2,200 people respond to the survey, which is unheard of. We haven't seen numbers like that and I don't think we ever got that high during COVID when we sent out some surveys on behalf of the school district. So there were a lot of people who wanted to give us some feedback. And the good news of that was we had a great range of feedback. And many of these questions throughout provided room for open-ended questions. And many of us did take the time to go through all those questions and really pulled out some high-level themes that we'll talk about tonight. So again, we had, the majority of the people were somehow affiliated with schools. About 1,200 people had some connection to the school, whether their employee had a child here. And then about 933 people were unaffiliated. Again, we were really excited about the mix of people. Even as we consider the age ranges of our respondents, we had a great turnout. You know, we had respondents from each age range. Our biggest age range being that middle 35 to 54. And those were two separate, but together with our 65-plus was really the majority of the people who responded to the survey. And the good news is that most people felt that they were very informed about the information regarding issue six and issue 28. And so 1,285 people said they were very informed. They had a lot of information. 702 people said they had some information, which was good. 168 people said they didn't have much information and only 19 people said they had no information. And so the good news is people felt informed, they felt like they had information. In the comments, it was clear that there were still some questions that they had. Despite being informed, they still were unclear perhaps on how some of these things would work as it pertains to the building structure, how it would pertain to the city and the schools being in partnership with one another. And those were the main things that came out of the open-ended portion of this. In addition to getting this information and knowing that they had it, we were curious to know where they were getting the information from and how were they seeking out information? And it was a clear winner that at 1,281 respondents, social media was the number one way in which people were getting information. The second was through our district newsletters that go out and that was just about 1,100 respondents and through our district website. So despite in many communities, people not seeking out website information, we had 982 people that were getting information from our website. And then the next was by word of mouth. So 752 people said the majority of their information came from word of mouth. And then the next answer was a significant drop-off at around 400. So we know that people were getting their information through district channels, whether it be social media or through our website and newsletters and information sent out. So we know how we need to communicate with people moving forward. And again, we know that people were fairly informed. But the one thing that perhaps we need to do a better job moving forward, only 61% of the respondents understood or knew about the partnership with the OSCC and the fact that the schools would gain 30-plus million dollars through this partnership. And so we know again that that is a source that we would need to tap into moving forward and make sure that we're clear about what that would look like as it pertains to the partnership with the OFCC and knowing that may would be our last opportunity to fulfill that contract. Probably the most insightful, this was all very insightful, but knowing that of all of these respondents, no age group in particular and as a strong majority of people feel that our buildings, both high school and Liberty, and those are the only two that were asked about specifically in the survey, feel that the facilities are insufficient for our students. And to break those down in numbers, the high school respondents, almost 1,500 of them felt that the high school is insufficient. Only 253 said it was sufficient and 419 were unsure. So we have 419 people who need to make sure we're reaching out to, giving them the information, sharing what we know about our current conditions at the high school. And then on the Liberty side, 1,252 people feel that that building is insufficient. 425 feel it's sufficient and 496 are unsure. Again, some communicating to do on our behalf. Many of the comments revolved around needing to understand more specifics on the plan and what it would look like in terms of building. And what came out was the community center in particular and the unsure of having a community center as part of the schools. Again, not understanding the partnership, in some cases, security and how that would work being attached to a school. Many supported a new high school but didn't understand the entirety of the need in the district and so asking for more information. And I do want to share two separate comments, which actually are not the ones listed. But one parent said, as the parent of a child who will be entering the school system within the next two years, it is disheartening to see these levies and bond issues fail time after time. My husband and I are actively looking to move to a city where the residents support the schools, community buildings, and are forward-thinking. I really wish North Ridgeville could be that, but the citizens here are telling us otherwise by their votes. And a second parent said, my children attend another district, but we are still strong supporters of NRCS. I was glad to see this innovative plan put forward. Please keep pushing forward and focus on the big picture. I don't share that to bring us down. I share that because there is support in the district and there are people out there who would like to see us be able to bring these plans to fruition and who would like to see us continue to try and put forward information. And I know that everybody here in the room is hoping for that to be true. Okay. So again, the community center seemed to be a little bit of a confusion. While 41% of the residents supported it, 37% opposed it and 21 were unsure. Again, there was a piece of information that was missing there and people didn't understand how that would work, which really led to, you know, I think people perhaps making a decision without having all the information. And more to come on that. And 69% of the residents support replacing the high school, as we discussed already, and 62% of the residents support replacing Liberty. Again, most felt in the open-ended comments that we needed to have more specifics. Again, things that, you know, we know we've talked about. We don't have architectural drawings in place until we pass a bond issue and that is hard for some to understand. And that seemed to be the theme coming out. And so, you know, again, just trying to do what we can to communicate, you know, what we can and can't do pre-bond, post-bond and what it looks like when we're successful. You know, we had some comments there, ask for a school and be done with it. Address the most urgent need of space for educating with the new bigger building size for at least five years of growth and don't put multiple projects in a single issue. Focus on getting new schools and then focus on a community center. The community center would be wonderful for Ridgeville, but wrong timing. Surrounding school levies passed, but this did not. We need to focus on schools. And again, we know that there were a number of factors that we'll take a look at that led to the results of November. One piece of data pulled out specifically was in regards to our residents 65 years of age and above. And when we asked them about the senior center and the community center and the idea of having that attached to the building, they opposed that. But they did, in fact, support a high school to some degree. And so again, we need to find that connection with that age range and determine how best to move forward as we think about May and we think about possible next steps. It was very clear overall that when we talked about priorities of the school district, most respondents felt that having a long-term plan was most important and educationally sound long-term plan. While obviously using our funds efficiently and making sure that we're. While obviously using our funds efficiently and making sure that we're taking care of taxpayer dollars. You know, safety and security was something that I know the mayor and I heard about throughout our talks. That didn't come out to be one of the, the more prominent answers in this particular question. Most people who answered this with an open-ended response said, these are all important and how can we separate them? And we have to focus on all of this. I think the majority of people understand our growth. They understand what we're facing in the next five to ten years and perhaps beyond, and they, and they understand the need for schools. You know, I think we need to take a step back, revisit, you know, what it is we set out to do in November and ultimately, you know, look at how we can move ahead as a school district. So again, as we look at some key takeaways and talk about next steps, we know that the economic conditions of November played a role in the way that people voted. Now, we know that eighty-five percent of our respondents believe that we need new facilities. We know that there was some confusion as it pertained to the community center and how that would work alongside our buildings. We also know that there was some confusion about the vote. Could I vote for one? Did I have to vote for both? And I think that led to ultimately perhaps some people saying no to the schools because they felt they had to vote yes or no both ways. And there were many people who commented that they always support the schools, but couldn't support the idea of a community center. There were some people, and this wasn't a hu- a huge population of people, who wanted more information about their current conditions, what our buildings look like, how we could get more information about the current conditions. And so we know we have that information. And ultimately looking at the educational benefits. So things that we've talked about, being able to provide all-day kindergarten, being able to provide universal preschool, being able to expand our STEAM programming, and being able to do things we currently can't do with the facilities that we have in place and the space constraints that we're working through. So ultimately, it would be my recommendation that the Board of Education makes a decision to move forward in May with our school project. We think it would be wise and this is not information new here tonight, but the mayor has also shared with City Council that they would like to take a pause on their portion and help us move forward with the schools that we desperately need. And sometime down the road, be able to revisit the idea of a new senior center, a new rec center. And be able to provide for North Ridgeville the ultimate services that they desire in a time that is appropriate and perhaps more palatable. So I would again recommend that we look to the May issue, which would put us in a position to discuss moving forward and what those resolutions are like. Thank you very much for your time and I would answer any questions.
The results really surprised any of us from the survey. I mean, I think that was just some of the feedback we got election night. We knew the economy was going to play a role. That was absolutely no surprise. I'm excited to put it back on May. The seven thousand plus people that showed up in November, we really need them to show back up in May and vote the same way on behalf of the schools. Our need hasn't changed and will not change. To the city, thank you. Look forward to working with you in the future and the opportunity to partner. The community deserves nothing less than the two taxing entities to figure out ways to give this community everything they need and want and save the taxpayers money in the process. Still disappointed, still kind of smarts a little bit that we didn't pass in November because I think everybody did a phenomenal job to get the information out. Kind of confused or surprised at the confusion that they were two separate ballot initiatives. I thought that was really well done and explained, but now we know it wasn't. We'll have to figure it out. But the biggest takeaway from all this is this shows all the hard work that went into getting the information out and that's a testament to all of you and this estimate start designing and building a new school.
If I could say one quick thing, social media had such a presence for this, the both issues. And I feel like I just want to make sure that everybody knows where the source is coming from, you know, really to, to make sure that what you're reading on social media is coming from a true source, a reliable source and not just hearsay.
So actually that brings up a good point and I want to give credit to the mayor who you know, spent some time going through some of those social media accounts and to my own dismay and my assistant superintendent's dismay, I've done the same. You know, but reading that is difficult and it, you know, really is a, a challenge to sift through, you know, what is actual information, what is being shared? You know, through anger, what is being shared through misinformation or spite? And, and again, you know, being able to go through and reasonably pick out people who, you know, are vocal, but you know, have an interest or have you know, ideas or could be helpful. And, and so we've begun to do that and reached out to a few in particular that we actually met with last night. Some of our, you know, more active members on, on some of the social media forums and, you know, had a great meeting. And so I think being able to share information, you know, sometimes face-to-face and be able to get that out there in a true manner. You know, one of the gentlemen last night said it really humanized, you know, the conversation to some degree. You know, again, it was a great conversation and, you know, we're not looking to change people's minds and we're not looking to, you know, make people agree with us. We're just trying to get the information out there in a factual manner that they can use to make an informed decision.
Thank you. That's great.
All right. There's an opportunity for carrying up the public. Anybody in attendance would like to address the Board of Education? How's your opportunity?
Mr. Vaca, I would just like to make two announcements about our upcoming meetings in January. The Board of Education will have our organizational meeting on January third, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty PM immediately followed by our regular meeting at five forty-five PM. So I want people to be aware that those meetings, a little bit of adjustment in time for those. Of course.
We'll move into the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented. Move by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca? Yes. Finance audit report, Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. We have three items tonight under the finance audit report. The first two items, we have a resolution to approve the finance reports for the month of November two thousand twenty-two and a transfer of funds. This is our annual transfer to the maintenance fund to satisfy the maintenance of completed facilities. The maintenance of completed facilities as specified in, I'm sorry, two thousand fourteen board adapted resolution to earmark dollars to the maintenance fund. I move to approve these two finance and audit items in one reading.
Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Saxton. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Oh, Miss tomorrow?
Yes.
And then the third item, moving ahead on Ms. Serio's recommendation to the board, we have a resolution of necessity for a bond issue election. Maximum principal amount of one hundred ninety million dollars, one hundred ninety million, twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing, adding to renovating, furnishing, equipping and otherwise improving school district buildings and facilities and acquiring, clearing, improving and equipping their sites. Maximum term of thirty-seven years, estimated interest rate of five percent to be submitted to the electors of the school district at the May second, two thousand twenty-three election. I move to approve this report in one reading.
Second.
Move by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes. Other board business, I am accepting nominations for the position of president pro temp for the January third, two thousand twenty-three organizational meeting.
I nominate Mr. Vaca.
Nominations this evening? I have a motion to close nominations. Ms. McCarthy? Voting for the office of president pro temp.
Mr. Ridgeby? Ms. McCarthy?
Mr. Vaca?
Ms. Saxton?
Mr. Vaca?
Miss tomorrow?
Mr. Vaca?
Been elected as president pro temp for the educational, or the organizational meeting on January third. It's recommended that I be appointed to that set position. Move by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxton. Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Human resources report, Ms. Saxton?
Let's see, a few items to consider under human resources report. One administrative staff resignation, two support staff resignations, one certified staff leave replacement appointment, one certified building substitute contract, one non-represented support staff contract, two support staff appointments, one support staff leave replacement appointment, three support staff leaves of absence. I move to approve the human resources report in one.
Move by Ms. Saxton, second by Ms. Tamira. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employees and matters related to negotiations of public employees. There will be no action to follow.
Moved. Second.
Move by Ms. Tamira, second. Ms. McCarthy, roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeby?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.